The letter that Gail Associates issued regarding sixty East Main Street athletic facilities. That was their synopsis of the last public hearing. And we took that and combined in comments made by the board and the technical review engineer and gave a letter back. And that letter is included in the planning office. Part of the agenda. Everyone's working on their responsibilities. And that is the agreed upon list of outstanding items for the athletic facility.
The one that you wrote.
Right.
Yep. So, moving on to vouchers.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I would like to make a motion to pay the vouchers totaling one hundred forty-nine dollars eighty-three cents.
Second.
Your motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Two absent, three yes. Okay, moving on to new business. Howard?
Under new business, I provided the contract with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. It's the contract for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen to provide the MIMAP services. It includes the fifteen hundred dollars for the contract for the town and all the other departments to be able to access MIMAP. It includes fifteen hundred dollars that's additional this year to provide MIMAP to outside of Town Hall and Town Departments. That fifteen hundred dollars, if you recall, was an increase in the planning board budget that FinCom vetted and approved.
Do we have the... Do we have the scope of services?
No, I haven't even...
I missed mine. It's in the contract. I'm talking about two scope of services, but then it says the commission provides the planning services. Attached herein and made part of this agreement, but we don't have the scope. Not really comfortable authorizing a signature on a contract that I don't have all the information of. Scope of services? Commission will provide the town with professional planning services specified in the scope of services attached herein. But it isn't...
And then I don't want to... And you got this page. And then you got this page, right? This is all I received. Did you get the signature page with...
Yep.
Dennis Segwio?
Yep. That's all they did because of the Roman numerals. Scope of services, project staff responsibilities, town conferences, town... Yeah, I would agree with Harry.
This is just a general...
There is no scope.
There's no specified one. This is the general.
Roman numeral two is scope of services. You want clarification that all the scope of services is in the document they provided?
Yeah.
Because the wording's wrong, I guess.
Yeah.
It says it's attached.
I would agree.
Where is it?
So, can you clarify? So, that's for new business. Any... Anyone... Anyone in the public to talk about anything other than the A and R plan for Pillsbury Street and the public hearing? Because we're going to have those two public hearings coming up and public can talk to that when they come up. But was there anything else from the public? Any board members have anything they wanted to... I had a couple of items I wanted to put on the table.
I just wanted to talk about the minutes, but nobody's here, so...
We'll get to the minutes later.
Okay. That was my main issue.
Okay.
Just want to point out, A and R isn't really a hearing. It's just an approval not required.
Correct.
I mean, we could take that up.
Correct.
Three's always needed. Looks pretty...
I think we'd be... I think it would be wise to wait for the others to be a part of that. As far as member reports, a couple of things. I had mentioned to Howard Plaza with Dunkin' Donuts, that plaza and the lighting that's been put in under the canopy, just to have... Just to check in with that and...
I haven't heard back from the building inspector yet.
I'm not familiar.
You know the plaza with Dunkin' Donuts in it?
Yeah.
The canopy that they have that goes along the walk in front of the buildings? The overhang? They have these lights that they've added that are basically full floods and three hundred and sixty degrees.
Is that new?
Pretty new, yeah. And then the last, I don't know, month, couple of months. So, it's just making sure that...
Were they doing a special permit or something before the zoning?
Yeah.
Did they get a permit to do that?
You're still... The lighting would be under the purview of the planning board.
Right, that would be like a site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
I don't think they've cleared all the...
The building inspector needs to...
So, both Tim and Bob are not here and they were part of my next item, which is wanted to get their three items for what they want to do with this coming year. And then the new stormwater regulations, two thousand and eight. I just wanted to put it in front of the board and talk about how quickly and how we want to go about getting that in front of the board and getting that part of our... Part of our town requirements.
Did the city call you?
The revised ones?
We adopted that as part of regulations.
Ellie?
Yeah, we talked.
Oh, yeah, good. She did call you.
We adopted that when we did our last regulatory revision. Our last subdivision regulations, we adopted the...
Two thousand and eight?
So...
Stormwater handbook.
I thought... Okay, that's great if we did. I thought the...
But it doesn't... And that incorporates the latest from the stormwater handbook. I think when people are talking about stormwater updates, I know there have been a lot of communities that have updated their stormwater calculations using newer numbers that EEP has yet to adopt.
Those are the Cornell numbers, right?
Exactly.
Right. Well, so those have not been adopted?
By EEP, no.
Okay, but in certain... We haven't adopted those.
No, some communities have them.
Okay. And that... I think that's...
Certainly be something we'd love to look at, I believe.
That's what I was talking... So, that's what I'm talking to. And what's the process that we need to go through to...
Well, that's why I suggested we would...
We would need to open a regulatory hearing.
Remember, we had a lot of conversation over that and wild, John?
Yeah, but this is one sp... I do. But this is just one specific item.
Yeah.
And maybe we don't have to work it out right now. Maybe it's just that it's now on the table. Let's make it an agenda item.
Well, the under-planning office, review of possible amendments to bylaws and regulations for special town meeting. So, we can move right into that agenda item and talk about it. If Bob and Tim aren't here, it'd be good if they're here. So, all the board members, because I need to get a priority list from the whole board of what actions we're going to undertake for special town meeting. And then I can proceed in saying, okay, these are the three, these are the four, whatever amount we come up with. This is how we should be proceeding.
All right.
I think we have a list established.
We started talking about it, but I don't have a definitive list.
And we have...
I've got a lot of board members saying there's a lot of things they want to bring up, but we can't bring them all up. We can't talk about them all, so...
So, can we schedule this then perhaps as an agenda item versus at the end of a meeting? To give it some serious thought.
I do remember the list of all the things that you've been keeping very good track of, Howard.
Right.
The majority of those are zoning code corrections, amendments. When we would be talking about the Cornell numbers, we would be talking about three sixty-five, the planning subdivision regs and amending those subdivision regulations.
Right.
Now, do we have to go to town meeting for that?
It's always nice to do after you do it.
No, it's not necessary, though. Like, to answer his question, it's not necessary.
I'm only echoing what K and P would say.
But you do have to post it as a legal hearing. You have to do the ad.
For sure.
Yeah.
But...
But with the... As I understand it, with...
You mean if you get the planning board...
Any zoning change needs to go to town meeting?
Obviously, yes.
Any regs, which this is all dictated by the planning board, as Tony is saying, you need to have a notice, public hearing, open to public process. But then this does not need to go to town meeting for approval.
And in which we always have asked them to adopt afterwards. That's what K and P always ask us.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
It makes it stronger, is what...
And would the... Would these... Would this adoption of the Cornell numbers or after we talk about it, however we want to label it, would that end up being in the subdivision? Okay. So, I guess what I'm asking is on that particular item, can we make that an agenda item to have a discussion when, you know, next time or the meeting after?
Right, because we need to have set aside a part of a meeting to talk about all these things and clarify what's going to happen.
Okay. There's two things going on. There's all of them, but then there's this one.
And that one is part of everything. And that's the point I'm trying to get... Harry, please. I need the board to say, I want to... We want to address the stormwater. We want to address the regulations, right?
Yep.
So, now you're saying the stormwater is going to be separate.
Okay, no, I'm not trying to, Howard.
Okay, so, yes, I will set up an agenda item.
Yep.
And it will be listed under that of what the board wants to do for special town meeting. And for through the review process through the whole summer, it can be part of that effort just because it's not going to go to special town meeting.
Right.
But I don't understand how this is not...
I guess... And help me understand where I'm not connecting. What I'm thinking is that the adoption of these numbers, if the board decided that's what they wanted to do, the adoption of these numbers could simply just happen in and of itself as an agenda item.
No.
It's its own public hearing. Public hearing has to be noticed and published that we are changing the subdivision regulations.
I know that. I know that.
Okay.
But why can't that just be... Because I think, and maybe I'm jumping the gun, I get from what I'm hearing, I think the board is in favor of that. But obviously, they all have to vote on that.
Right.
But after the public hearings for that, why can't we just do that as just that one standalone item, but also have this item, which is all of the bylaws that you're talking about for town meeting? Why can't they be two separate tracks?
I believe they have to be. They have to be two separate hearings.
Right, right.
But what we could do really is to have...
This is becoming overly complicated, okay? And to try to help facilitate this and not belabor it right now, the whole board needs to get together, and I'm just going to try to rephrase this a different way, and say, these are the items we want to address this summer in terms of the regs and the bylaws. Stormwater can be one of them. But you need to know what you're going to be choosing. I need to know what the board wants to choose.
Or you can't publicly notice it.
I can't notice it and I can't organize it. And yes, it can be one of the four things that the board takes through the summer. So, if...
Okay.
When we all talk and we say, okay, these are the four items this board is going to undertake. Stormwater, we already know is one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'll go through the public hearing notice process and we'll have discussion about it. And at the end of that, we'll know how it needs to get adopted into the regs.
All right. I do understand what you're saying. Let's put this to bed for now. How do we want to wrap this one agenda item up, though, so for the next time?
I can just place what I have under planning office as a whole separate matter under new business of the board.
Okay. And that will call attention to it for all the members to come prepared.
Right. More, I guess, than what I had down here.
Maybe that's what you need to do then, Howard. Okay.
Would it suffice to just provide us at that point with that spreadsheet? I'll print out of that spreadsheet.
I thought I did in the packet, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, we can...
What we really just need is more members.
I don't think we decided on four things, though. I mean, that's another thing that we have to decide on.
That's the outcome of the next meeting.
That's what we will decide as a board.
You're thinking back to the form.
We'll try to decide that.
Because you can always continue these hearings to put in.
So, let's see. And as far as planning office is concerned, we've already covered that, right, Howard?
Yes.
Okay, so, I think we should wait for the others.
Oh, I understood.
I think we should wait. I apologize.
I'd like to make a motion to take a short recess.
Any... Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Short recess until... Okay. We are now back in from our recess and we're going to begin Howard with the A and R introduction.
Yeah, we received a Form A, approval not required. Application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval through the subdivision process for twenty-one Pillsbury Street. And applicant is here. I provided in the packet separately undercover a full-size plan as well as the submitted documents. And here from the applicant, because I just gave a brief overview, but you've got all the specifics.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Alderman with A and S Land Services. It's a pretty straightforward A and R application. We are appealing one lot off of the overall current parcel here. It's a twenty-two acre lot originally. And we're appealing off the just about forty thousand square feet, which is the minimum required lot area. Both lots have conforming frontage. So, it's residential B zoning. Aside from that, it's pretty straightforward. Other questions?
Oh, Tilly, we'll start with you. Is that all right?
Sure. I... My first question was there's a thirty-six Pillsbury Street listed.
Yes.
And you were calling this twenty-one. Can you explain why?
Ellie, it's that. It's a simple one. I can't get in trouble with that one.
Okay.
It's the town. It's the town assessor's office. Nobody screwed up. It's just they called it thirty-six forever. But the town record is twenty-one. Town record of record is twenty-one.
And the deed for the property purchased is for twenty-one?
The town... We've called it thirty-six forever. It's been thirty-six for a million years. Saint Laurent's had it. But the town has it recorded as twenty-one.
The town has it recorded as twenty-one and the register has it recorded as thirty-six. Interestingly enough.
Well, the Saint Laurent's always use thirty-six. And when I looked at the street map, street listing, it's thirty-six. And that's why I got lost. I went on there and saying, where's the twenty-one?
You had kind of a dumped out of look on your face as you were saying. You're like, what is the actual address of this?
So, the assessors... What's on your deed, though?
On the deed is thirty-six.
On the deed?
Yes.
Yeah, for the record, what the map and lot number is.
Map and lot number is map twelve, lot twenty-five, listed as twenty-one Pillsbury Street.
Tilly, did you have any other questions?
Well, my other concern was it is probably not anything to do with A and R because we only address the frontage. And it's the shape of the back. Why is it that way?
That is another... The zoning issue is not part of us.
That's right. But I just was, you know, why is that shaped like that? That's right. But I just was, you know, why is that shaped like that?
Both sides like that, Tilly, see it? It's how somebody did.
Well, it is, if you notice, the, uh, subject parcel has some pretty interesting geometry to it. You know, it's got this little pinch point, uh, and that's kind of the result of the historical, you know, the history of, of this parcel is, you know, there's a, a lot down here at one time, then there's a lot up here and, you know, over time, it, it, we found that there's a rock wall that comes in here, um, so this boundary is formed here by a rock wall and then there's an iron pipe, a set of iron pipes here. Um, and just to, we wanted to make it as little frontage as possible for this lot, so it kind of came out and around. And then this was just kind of, I want, we wanted to maintain some width here and to get the required amount of area. We just came back and I just cut straight back towards the iron pipe. Um, not graceful, but.
Oh, that's all right.
It's, this is an interesting shape, you know, to begin with.
Somebody did it two hundred years ago, rocks.
Yeah, right.
Three hundred years.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing that I would s- look at for this would be, um, the setback, the front yard setback. Um, it seems as though the house was built a little bit closer to the lot line than, you know, fifteen feet or something, whereas the setback is thirty.
Uh, yes, it's at fifteen feet to the corner of the house here. Um, you know, there is never, there's no record of a right-of-way through there. So we are setting lines for the right-of-way through here, um, and pretty much this line came about from, we set this line. This is another lot that was, um, this, it's under common ownership, ownership. This is lot thirty-eight. Um, so we were setting line for this and what we did here was we took a parallel curve along the edge of pavement. And there's utilities that are in between, if you look on the plans, there's utilities in between the pavement and the right-of-way line. So we took, uh, kind of the best fit, uh, offset off of lot thirty-eight's right-of-way line to get the frontage along, uh, what we're calling lot B.
What did you set, if I may please, what did you set the roadway, or excuse me, the right-of-way?
Right-of-way.
With as?
Um, well, it varies.
I know that. I've driven down it.
But it, it varies, but I tried to keep it as parallel as I could while, uh, while also getting it through the monumentation. There's an iron pipe right here.
Okay.
Um, so basically it, it sweeps at kind of a constant rate away from this right-of-way line to make it to this iron pipe.
And that iron pipe is, is in the description?
Isn't on the description, but it's right at the end of the rock wall, so it, we treat it as monumentation.
The, the, the only thing that I would say is that we're probably pretty much setting that in stone now, so to speak. And, um, I, 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 I don't know enough about non-conformities in zoning to know if, um, by setting that line and separating that out now, that fifteen feet from that street, if you will, as opposed to the thirty feet that it's supposed to have for a front yard setback, um, which, Tilly, I'll defer to Tilly on that because she's, she's more zoning than I am. Uh, I, I don't know about, does that create a, I mean, it doesn't create a greater non-conformity because it's already there, so.
That's, that's when the building inspector really.
What I, what I'd like to do is, is, is flag these points, but before we get focused in on one of them, I'd like to go around everyone first, okay?
Sure, um, i- if, if, if I may, the, the only thing I guess I'd, I'd like to say is, uh, there's a blurb in Howard would, would have the wording. We do it for, uh, for A and R's all the time. Uh, we add some wording on, um.
There, there's three suggested, or two suggested about the endorsement, doesn't mean that it's been reviewed against zoning and subdivision regulations.
Something like that, yeah, yeah, I'm sure you have the exact wording that, I, I, I feel comfortable if that was there before my signature was, that's all I'd say. Just if someone thirty years from now goes to, wants to put a porch on there for, wants to buy it and with the idea that they're gonna put a front porch, um, it should flag. If they have a, not much of a chance.
What's that blurb?
Because this will be the problem.
Right.
Not conformed to.
Rob's got a copy.
It, it, it's, it's, it's in here and, um, we'll.
It's a very common blurb.
Yeah, no, there's three, there's three phrases that they have, um, that they propose, um, that you, you can use, which basically is saying, we're, we're, we're endorsing the A and R plan, but be really clear, there's nothing about the zoning that we're approving here.
Right, we're, we're, we're not.
And it's, it's worded better than that, but, um, it, it, it's, it's in there somewhere.
I mean, the other one clearly does, the big lot, the remainder.
Right.
So something about not constituting a buildable lot or something like that?
Well, that's another one of those. I, I'll, I'll find that, okay? Uh, what's, Bob, you?
I, the only real question that I have has to do with the, the existing woods road. Um, and, and this is simply my own ignorance of, of.
I asked you, existing what?
The existing woods road that, uh, that's the property. Um, does, does this place any limitation on development, further development, or anything else that can be done along that way?
You, uh, you can't really consider it for an A and R. That's not the board's, the planning board's responsibility.
Okay.
That, that the onus is on the applicant.
If, if, if the, if the applicant pursues an A and R and limits his future development, then that's the, the applicant's own doing.
The, 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 the board can't consider endorsing an A and R based upon what future use of the property can be.
No, no, but I'm, uh, I see. If, if. But I'm, I'm just thinking about things like planting where the woods road is. Now, that's future, yeah, but, um.
But you can't obstruct it.
You can't obstruct it, that's it.
And, and, uh, I believe that's why they put the, uh, the easement down to protect the, the woods roads.
Is that wood lot road or woods road, it deeded in any way?
Yes. It's in the deed.
My other deed, I, we've always owned that. My base, my original farm is always, that's what the deed is. Dole gave it, Dole gave that off a long time ago, so we moved over from farm.
Yeah, that predates, um, even Pillsbury Lane. It predates, uh, I think it even predates Pond Street, so it's very old.
But you can't prevent access to it, I believe.
Yeah. Yes, it's not, it's, it's defined on paper only. And the logical, the logical root of it is be, this from here to here exists. And the, uh, Saint Laurent's, they filled for their driveway, so it's there. The, the purpose of the, the access by purpose of deed was to come from Pillsbury Street to come straight through and out through the Alson's property in the back. That would be a long time ago. It's ancient work out there.
Do you have anything?
No problem.
Okay. Um, some questions that I had, uh, they're, um, these aren't in order of importance, but there are some other, um, zoning, non-conforming issues and, um, without going into those, I'm in full agreement with Harry about, um, adding in the note to the plan. And I'm just gonna read this for the board, but, so this is the, this is the A and R handbook, approval not required plans from the Commonwealth. And a plan showing proposed lots with sufficient frontage and access, but showing some other zoning violations is entitled to an endorsement. Blah, 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 blah. Then it goes on. We suggest that the planning board may properly add on a plan under its endorsement an explanation to the effect that the planning board has made no determination regarding zoning compliance. They give three, they give three examples that you can use. One is the above endorsement is not determination of conformance with zoning regulations. Number two is no determination of compliance with zoning requirements has been made or intended. And number three, planning board endorsement under subdivision control law should not be construed as, as either an endorsement or an approval of zoning lot area requirements. So at some point we will.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, endorse the plan, uh, with the first of those three options that you read.
Uh, okay, there's been a motion made. Um, I'd like.
But, yeah, just to clarify, the board can't, um, endorse the plan with signature tonight, uh, because there isn't a MyLAR and you're requesting some text be added to the plan.
My apologies, I thought there was a MyLAR and we just penciled it in.
Did you bring a MyLAR?
We just, that's what.
Not for this evening.
Oh, okay. What's that?
Not this evening.
Not this evening, okay.
I, I, so, so that, that was with regards to the zoning issues, I think it's appropriate that we can come back and talk about adding a note to the, to the plan. Um, when you said the existing woods road was deeded and it's on paper, it's, it's not meet, met in bounds, is it?
No.
Like, it's just a graphic?
It's, uh, it's described as existing, or it's exact, it's described as woods road, I believe.
So I s- you might, um, you might wanna spell out, uh, how that, easement is clear to me where it's twenty foot off the property line, which has a meet and bound. But then when the existing wood road starts to go into the abutting property, but up to that property line, you really don't know where that meet and bound falls. Um, the other one, it's really tied in well, so you might just carry some line up and give it a definition up to that property line and then it's.
Are you talking into lot B?
Just up to the property line.
Up to, so, uh, like maybe put monumentation?
Yeah, monumentation or you, I mean, you have a meet and bounds on the property line to the.
Yeah, Rob, you've got a plan and a.
Just straight line out that property line, is it?
Right, yes.
If you just carry that property line and give it a meet and bounds that, you know, then you've got your twenty-four dimensions off of that and it takes care of it to there.
Well, there's meet and bounds for the, the entire easement. It's in the table right there.
But it's, it's not for this portion.
Yes, for that portion too. It's all in that table right there on the left.
I don't have a laser for that.
It's a, you'll see that there's, there's tags along this, along this table says, uh, L five, L three. Those are the meets and bounds for, for that area.
Got it, all right.
So all of the math for the easement has been laid down on the ground.
Okay.
Got it right there.
That makes sense.
That's, that's right, right there.
Um, has fire and police responded?
Uh, with an A and R, uh, I usually go out, if the board requests it, to get comments from, uh, public safety departments about adequacy of the way and access and stuff.
Does, does the board have any feelings about that one way or the other?
Just, uh, to remind the board, the board is twenty-one days after the applicant has, has filed with the town clerk to render a, a decision on endorsement or not of the plan. So if they wish for the fire and police department to weigh in on adequacy, we can get those comments and at the next meeting still be within the twenty-one days of the review period to entertain any comments.
Wouldn't that more pertain to like building something new?
Yeah.
I, I think what they would be looking at would be, is the a- is the access adequate for their needs to the property?
Well, considering that this is a, an accepted town road on the official town map, um, do we wanna go there?
And, and there's an existing house and existing drive.
Several, several houses and several dwellings.
The, the planning board requested, uh, fire and police comments when they were looking at the A and R for the Moore House property off of George Street, because those were vacant lots.
Yeah.
The, the only, the only question that I have that I'm not clear on is, and I don't know the, I don't know the non-compliance issue, but the difference here is that it's in the way, which is the existing, um, driveway and the mouth of the driveway and so on and so forth. And I honestly don't know, um, if that has any impact on, on whether we can approve or not approve an A and R, if it impacts that or not. Um, I don't know. And I don't know if Howard, I don't know if you know anything about that?
Uh, really, our only options as it comes to that is to make the right-of-way narrower.
Right.
And that is, um, it's pretty narrow already. As you've, I'm sure all of you have been up Pillsbury Street, um, you know, this is the, that very tight curve, blind curve, uh, it's, it's tight already. So, um, it would be pretty difficult to really make it so that, you know, I'm not sure what the, which, which driveway are we talking about? There's two entrances.
It's the large driveway that is, um, where the building comes into the road and has fifteen feet from the property line.
Pointed out on the screen.
You're talking about right here, right?
You got it.
And specifically, what is, um, the issue with it?
Well, that's, that's exactly my question.
You overlapped it.
My, my, my question is that I don't know where this is a non-conforming zoning issue, where the property driveway is over here. Um, that's a zoning issue that we've all talked about how we're going to address with notes. But I honestly don't know about this portion because it's.
Well, if, if I can just add to that, um, Rob, sorry, is, um, right here is the driveway and there's a portion of the driveway in the public right of way, and this is a portion of, of another driveway to the, the house that's over here. So is, is the concern of, of how much that driveway is in the public right of way?
My, my, my concern is that there's a very large opening here with a turn here and they, they almost align.
If you saw it in, in the field, Rob, it's not that way because the land kind of rolls right down.
Yes.
It, the lawn rolls right down, will you see it?
Yeah.
And, and this little, your wall, it, it, it doesn't, I know what you're looking at, but it doesn't, it isn't that, but. And I say it rolls right down. I mean, it, it rolls right, right down.
If I may, I, I think if we were, uh, creating a, a lane or a corridor subdivision, um, what you'd have there would essentially be, um, if the property line didn't make it all the way to the existing pavement, but happened to be in the right-of-way, we would probably require an apron to go and meet the existing pavement. And I think that's what you have there, essentially.
I.
I just, I, 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 yeah, I, I just, um, I honestly don't know, and, and Howard, unless someone can.
Hey, I can get you an answer.
Can, can we get an answer on that?
Yeah, before the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I think those were, those are my only questions. Um, and then, uh, I don't know if we had any.
One more.
Yeah, one more.
I, I looked at the map and I took it with me when I drove up there. And I think you flipped that whole parcel where the houses should be the other way around. Because Bailey Way, I mean, excuse me, not Bailey Way, um, Pillsbury. All right.
Oh, yeah. You wanna try that?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Have some fun.
All right, now let's go.
Push this down down and see, see it's on. So you just push it down and point it, push it down, keep it down and then it can go up there and go up right there.
Oh, I got you. Thank you.
Sure.
I think this should be the other way around. Because when I was driving, like, you have Northway up here. So this is flipped, right? I'm driving up here.
Mm-hmm.
And I went around here and there's the garage. So I think you've got this house.
No, the garage is where you're pointing right now. Uh, if you go, the dri- um, there's, well, there's that.
You're looking at a different garage.
Yeah.
Different house, back down the street, you're looking at a different garage.
All right, where is, where is thirty-six?
My garage is in the far, far rear. You're looking at the garage that's right next to that house that stands all alone by itself.
This one?
There's a garage right on the street.
Yeah.
Even come down further on the map, but that garage is right about now, further down, and that, that had to be what you saw right there.
No, it's attached to the house.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's fixed up nice. It used to be darker.
Thank you.
You painted it white, I think.
Spent a lot of money there.
It looks very nice. And I think it's this house.
No, it's not white. No, Ray Go's, I call it Ray Go's, that's, you live there forever. Ray Go's house is white and that's where the garage is.
Right.
The garage for this house here, you almost literally can't see the garage. It's on the back, far, far back.
Tilly, are you questioning the, the accuracy of the plan or?
I did, yeah. But now I'm finding out this was, I was looking at the wrong house. I told you it was confusing between the twenty-one and the thirty-six.
Impossible.
Did you drive up it and find that house?
Yes, I did, I, I drove up.
Anybody else have a trouble?
The Raygos did a beautiful job on that house too, they did a really nice job on the house.
Okay.
White.
So that.
Uh, mine's like a brown color blind, it's grayish.
Did anyone else have any other questions right now? So, uh, what would be the board's pleasure for, seems like there's a note that would need to get on and clarification about that one apron issue.
Right.
Um, those are the two things right here, or continuing the meeting next time?
Well, Harry made a motion about which.
Yeah, but he didn't get a second or anything, so, it must've died, right?
So, do I hear a motion?
Um, I, I don't know what you'd like me to do.
Motion, continue?
Well, I'm thinking that.
It's not a hearing.
A motion.
There's nothing to continue, this is not a hearing.
You, you just.
You have to continue the twenty-one days.
This is not a hearing.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing.
But don't you.
There's nothing to continue.
You can request that, ask them to come back.
That we need to act upon within twenty-one days.
But don't you need?
Oh, I, I would like to, I'd like to make the motions that the ad, the engineer, the applicant, the engineer add that, that blurb, the first one that we specified.
So the first one is, the above endorsement is not a determination of conformance with zoning regulations?
I always liked that one, that was my personal favorite.
And it has, like you.
And, uh, what, what page was that on, the S, in the A and R handbook?
Page forty-eight in the handbook.
Forty-eight, option one.
Number one. The above endorsement is not a determination of conformance with zoning regulations.
And that's verbatim, the note that you wanted?
What year is that A and R handbook?
Two ten revised.
Okay, just so you know, two ten, right?
Um.
I think we need to continue it, we always did.
So then, um.
Yeah, I wanna continue it myself.
I don't know what you're continuing.
It's protection because you don't know what's gonna happen in twenty-one days.
I don't know what you're continuing.
They need, they need to, to come back to that.
We've always done it.
Right, we need to submit another plan that has the note in, at that time.
At that time.
Unless there's any other issues that the board figures, or is.
Uh, I would say that there's two items that, as town planner, I need to clarify for the board, but right now, I think the only thing you need to do to amend the plan is to add the note, and if, if there's anything that happens between the meetings, I'll certainly let you know, but come back at the next meeting with Myar, so.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay, thank you. When is your next meeting?
Twenty-third.
Can I, can you, can I get on your agenda for the twenty-third?
Yeah. The, the board has to put him on the agenda.
If they don't, then they automatically have to get it.
Twenty-one days, that's right, that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so, we're now, Howard, you'll introduce us to the first public hearing. Site plan.
Yeah, hold on just a moment.
Sure.
Seven o'clock? Seven o'clock, yes.
Yes. In accordance with the provisions of one six five eight three of the code, a town of Georgetown, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July ninth at seven fifteen in the third floor meeting room at Georgetown Memorial Town Hall, one library street to consider Serenity Restaurant Group's application for site plan approval for the exterior alteration of an existing facade and occupancy of an existing building at seventeen dash nineteen West Main Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts. The site is located in the business and commercial A district and is described as assessors map eleven A lot twenty-eight. How the application plan is unfiled, the Georgetown Planning Office, it may be inspected Monday through Thursday nine AM to four PM, any person interested or wishing to be heard regarding the application should appear either in person, agent, or by attorney at the time of first designated, this is published in the Newburyport Daily News, June twenty-seventh, July second, and what you have is, uh, unique to the planning board for as long as I've been here, site plan approval application by Serenity Restaurant Group for an exterior alteration. The applicant has been before the zoning board of appeals, that information is provided in your packet, uh, written in a letter, the Georgetown Building Inspection Department, letter dated April sixteenth. Uh, the applicant was informed of, the reason of coming before the planning board for site review was the exterior alteration, and that is why the applicant has come before the board. Board received, uh, in the packet, five sheets outlining their site plan approval, uh, application, and the applicant is here tonight, uh, to discuss.
What's up? So if you could introduce yourself and.
Yeah, glad to. My name is Richard Griffin, I'm, uh, representing the Serenity Restaurant Group as their architect and representative tonight, um, Jeff Calla, the managing partner, had wanted to make it, but was unable to. And, uh, this is essentially a collection of drawings that's before, that is before you, um, I suppose the most important is the site plan, um, the exterior was vetted fairly thoroughly about a month and a half ago by the Georgetown Board of Appeals, uh, we came before them for a special permit for signage and a special permit for, um, alteration of the facade of the building, um, due to the fact that although we were conforming with setbacks in the C A zone, we were, uh, the lot was non-conforming in terms of lot area and frontage, um, at that time, uh, we settled, uh, jointly with, with the Board of Appeals on, on a color scheme and, um, they're, they approved size and height and, um, and the features of, of the front of the building, um, including the, uh, the metal awning, which, um, is actually, uh, higher off the ground and, uh, less of an overhang of, well, the, the same overhang, two, a two-foot-six overhang of the sidewalk, but less high than the existing mansard roof that you see in the picture of the existing conditions before demolition started, and, uh, you'll see that this, this mansard roof, uh, the bottom of this is a foot and a half lower than the bottom of this awning, um, and it's substantially less massive, the fire department requested, um, engineered plans of both the parapet and the awning, and, uh, I submitted a stamped engineering, uh, engineer's letter on, uh, the awning, uh, attachment to the building and, um, stamped, uh, structural drawings of the trust company that is putting together the parapet, which is integral with the roof, so it's all tied into the roof itself. So what we, uh, think that the structure will be a substantial improvement on a level of public safety to what was there before, and we hope that it's a big improvement over what was there before in other, other respects as well. The, uh, there has been no change whatsoever to the footprint of the building, the footprint remains exactly the same in terms of what is on the site plan now, remains on the site plan. There is an agreement with, uh, due to the ZBA's request to enclose the dumpster with a stockade fence. We are requesting a waiver from parking because, um, uh, there, there are only seven parking spaces on the lot, we're limited by that, and this is, but we are not increasing the occupancy of, of the restaurant within, it's remaining at eighty-seven, seating for eighty-seven.
Seven?
Eighty-seven.
Is that big?
Yeah, no, it's a good sized bar, and, uh, actually a fair amount of, fair amount of seats. I don't know if we're quite squeezing quite as many seats in actually as, as they had, they had eighty-seven, and we're trying to close to that. There is also, um, let's see, there was the parking waiver and a waiver requested for my being able to stamp the drawing, um, since it is allowed, I gather, in, in the zoning bylaw, if, uh, if the, uh, plan, uh, does not require an engineer for any particular calculations, uh, we're requesting a waiver from the zoning, uh, submitting, uh, I'm sorry, drainage requirements, because the footprint is remaining exactly the same and the draining pattern is not being altered.
All set?
I hope so.
Thank you, um, what I'd like to do is first go sit down with the board, get initial comments, then go to the public, and then we'll come back to the board, um, Tim?
I, you know, I have no complaints with it, no problems with it, issues, I think it's gonna be a great improvement for the downtown.
I certainly agree with, uh, with Tim in that assessment. Uh, I wanted to ask a quick question, um, the change to the roof line is not gonna affect drainage at all?
No, um, the drainage always, uh, went off the back and sides of the building, we have a, we got it in the back and that's where the drainage.
And, and just for my curiosity, is, is there a half, um, a half story?
No.
Up top?
No, it, it's just the slope, we brought along a bigger drawing. In, in case, uh, as Richard Nixon once said, I'm glad you asked that question.
I'm glad you did.
But anyway, what, what happens is there's a, a, a line of trusses that brace the, the back of the building, so it, it's just, uh, a support structure, basically. We wanted to give slightly, you know, the, the low nature of this building seemed to, you know, it, it seemed to be more Georgetown-like to have a, you know, a taller, taller building in town, so.
Looks more substantial, yeah, but I have no other questions.
The, the trusses are of adequate strength, obviously, to stand there.
Yeah, in fact, we're, yeah, spanning them from end to end, uh, there's a middle bearing wall also, and, uh, they're actually beefing up the structure, existing structure of the roof, um, where they're, they're standing, because new roof loads are higher, the, the requirements are higher now than they used to be, so.
Like double?
Yeah, yeah, so we're making them quite a bit stronger.
Harry?
I don't really know what we're doing here, you've already got a special permit, I'm, I'm a little bit confused about exactly what our function is here, um, I, I, I do have a question about the awning, does that require a license?
As I understand, the awning, uh, being over a public right of way is, is a matter for the board of selectmen, and you've been before the board of selectmen?
I have been before the board of selectmen, they were a little bit puzzled because there are other awnings in town that haven't been before the board of selectmen, even our next door neighbors on either side, um, and the board of appeals, is it the zoning board of appeals, said, well, uh, we find this to be less intrusive than the previous overhang, so, um, because it's less intrusive, we don't have any problems with it. That's one, one board that's spoken up, um, and, um.
Did the selectmen s-?
The selectmen were for it, uh, but they said, well, it probably shouldn't, um, come before a, uh, a town meeting, you know, they were a little bit indefinite, they are having a town meeting, I gather there's a town meeting this September, and, uh, I think if this hasn't been, if the building inspector does not salute it, um, uh, we will grant it before the town meeting and leave it on hold.
You need a, to go before a town meeting to grant a license?
To, I guess it would be sort of an easement over, over the sidewalk.
So, right. No, what you'd want would be a license.
Or a license?
You'd want a license, you wouldn't need a meeting anyway.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, so, um, I, I guess because it's site plan approval?
No waivers.
And, um, I'm, I'm looking at it, um, where are you gonna park, what is it, eighty-seven cars, uh, eighty-seven seats? What's that?
They're required to have twenty-two spaces.
Twenty, where, where, where are you parking place?
Twenty-two spaces.
Can you show me twenty, because I mean, at this point, I, I think what we have to do is take into consideration this letter, then, maybe we oughta enter into the record?
Sure. Uh, see, you can, why don't you enter that into the record right now, since you're talking about it, that's good.
So, um, evidently we have a letter from Stephen Molohan, if I'm saying that correctly, um, and, um, he's very concerned, evidently he's.
He's a notice to butter, just to clarify.
He's a notice to butter, yeah, um, and, um, main points are, um, in the past, the rear of his building at ten West Main has been used frequently as a parking lot for the restaurant, um, he has a sign posted that says private parking for customers of the insurance agency that's there only, it's lighted at night, he's owned the place for twenty-eight years, he's seen several restaurants come and go at the same location, and he's had ongoing parking problems when the restaurants were open for business, including illegal parking on private property, litter, broken glass, and vandalism.
Well, I.
He'd let.
This is, he's just reading this right now into the record.
This isn't me, I'm just trying to, uh, at, at any rate, he, he, he asks this gentleman, uh, Mr. Molohan, asks that, uh, the hearing not be closed tonight, but be continued until the twenty-third, as, uh, evidently he's unable to make tonight's meeting, but it sounds like he'd like to make the next one, but, uh, it, it certainly sounds like there, there's a parking problem there, how, how do we resolve it?
Well, um, I guess I, I would certainly, uh, feel free to speak on behalf of Serenity, but they would, um, assist in enforcing no parking on, on this gentleman's property, um, and, uh, um, I think we should do what we can to, to make sure patrons of, of new restaurant do not park on that property, um, we have, uh, I mean, there, there is on-street parking, um, I, I guess, uh, I'm at a, a little bit of a loss because I, it was my understanding that, um, you know, that the restaurant is, is continued with, at the same capacity, and I, we were unaware that there was, um, you know, discontent over, over the parking that it was providing for its previous customers, evidently it is, and, um, and we're certainly very willing to take that under advisement and do what we can.
I saw a, a plan that showed parking somewhere, it showed the parking that you have.
Yeah, yeah, the site plan shows the parking.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Ah, you know, I've been to that place several times, how do you actually drive in there?
There is a right of way, uh, in the, in the drive between the two buildings.
So basically it's, geez, I've, uh.
Drive back and.
So you just drive right in from, uh, from West Main?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And, shh, is, is that off the property? Is that dotted, dashed, lined?
Yes, it's a ri- it's a, it's an easement, uh, granted by the abutter. And it's also used for loading, um, the loading doors at the rear.
Gee, I, I don't think I've ever been in that parking lot. What's it like, anybody ever been in that parking lot?
Sure. Very narrow, I've never gone in it either.
Really?
Usually they have a S O S truck there.
Well, it's a site plan approval, that, that's the only aspect that I think hasn't already been addressed by the special permit.
Um, I think.
Yeah, that's the only thing that, I think is in our review here.
And he's requesting a waiver from meeting.
He's requesting a waiver from, yeah.
And, and just to add to that, this property's never been subject of the site plan approval before, so.
This is the first time?
First time.
Yeah.
So there isn't any.
No precedent.
Precedent, there's no decisions that have been made on any previous restaurant uses from the planning board?
Do you have any other questions, Harry?
Um, just, um, if, um, where, where the facade is being brought up, so much higher than the other buildings, um, if the restaurant doesn't make it, is that facade coming down? Or would it just always look like, well, it, it, it has the, um, what, what some might call the, the charming saloon look, um, i- if the restaurant were to not make it, um, would the look disappear?
I think that would depend upon the, the next ten. I think that would depend upon the next tenant. If they'd want the look to disappear, they would change, they would change it. And I might say that Serenity Restaurant Group has a terrific track record. And they've had their businesses in force for a good, long time. So Latitude Forty-four in Gloucester, Walmart Street Restaurant in Hamilton. They have a restaurant in Beverly Farms, and all of them have been, none have gone out of business. And it's been pretty successful.
So they've all been relatively successful, long-lasting?
Yeah, I, I would, yeah. I think Jeff Calla, the managing director of, of, like, the restaurant manager person is very talented. And he's committed to getting good staff, very well thought-out managers, and putting together, you know, a good program. And both he and Mark McVanna is the financial backer of the group. They're both very enthusiastic about what they're doing. Put enough, fortunately, they're well-heeled enough to put enough money into the places and energetic enough to keep them going. So I think it's a good, good opportunity for Georgetown to have this go forward. And I know, I know that they're very eager to go over.
We've already started the changes, right? They've already begun, so.
Want to keep this moving? Any more questions?
Sure, just where are the cars gonna go? I guess that's the only question I have. Where are all the cars going?
The signs, does, the signs that you're planning on putting up meet our code?
Yes. What, what happened with the, the planning board hearing was that the signs bar and restaurant.
The ZBA hearing, you mean?
The ZBA hearing, I'm sorry. Were determined to be, because they're going to be a brushed aluminum sign on just a slightly darker background than the signing, that they were viewed as informational signs rather than advertising signs. So the sign area was considered, this particular arrangement was given a special permit. They determined it didn't require variance, but the central sign is really the sign that's advertising the business.
And what do the other signs say? What do the other signs say?
The other signs say, the one on the left says "bar" and the one on the right says "restaurant."
Let's.
Descriptive.
I remember how our issue was on the across the street, remember? That football thing, and they were, they wanted a sign on each corner.
They, they wanted two signs, two different for signs.
Right, and we had an issue with that, right?
It was against the bylaw, but they didn't have a special permit. This is a special permit. I believe our discretion is gone here. The ZBA has determined that that is allowed.
Yeah.
That's outside our purview at this point, I believe.
That is, I would agree.
And you got, quite frankly, I'm reading the ZBA's decision, and they've already made this decision, and it's not been appealed?
No, the twenty-day period just lapsed. Go.
Okay. We usually do everything outside for a site review.
Especially on a site plan application, it's for an exterior alteration.
Right, right. We do everything outside, and I'm surprised that.
Well, they even oversaw this site plan review by doing the dumpster enclosures, so.
They did. They did everything that they didn't have to do.
There's, there's still things the board can consider as well.
Well, and, yeah, and I also think this.
No, I, I think it's good. I think, I was a little, I'm not familiar with the lighting. You know, because you've got an area down there that are all business. I'm trying to see how bright these lights are gonna be, the regular.
They're, they're, they're pretty standard sign lights, the gooseneck lighting.
Yeah.
And there's actually, there are a number of bulb options, LED and fluorescent and lamps. We're probably going to use an LED bulb. And we'll certainly keep them underneath the twelve-foot candle, street-level requirement of your, your code. I expect, it, it's a fairly directed and soft lighting on those signs.
Well, there's trees in the front there that you're not gonna get good vision from that, to read those signs. Because it covers all that thick.
Right, no, that's true. And so we would like to trim the tree on the right.
There's, there's, there's.
I'm sorry?
The downtown trees, they really fall. And that's, that's a winter picture.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Would there be requested the tree worn?
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, there's more trees planted here.
Yeah.
There's like three, is there three in the front?
There's one large one.
There's one large one here.
That one on the right.
They're as high as that roof, fifty feet, yeah, tighter than that.
That is off to the right. I mean, I think you'll see restaurant just a hundred.
So how are you gonna compensate for those trees?
By having great food.
Yeah. So that's your only lighting, is these, these?
Well, we would like to put some directional or downlight, soft LED lighting underneath the awning when it's up. And, and that would, you know, light the sidewalk area.
Yeah. Because I believe our bylaw says no signs in the windows, right? So you're not gonna do that, okay. We'll see what else.
I just have a couple of quick comments. Want me to go before or after you?
Oh, it doesn't matter, go ahead.
We received, the site plan application was mailed out to the other town departments. We received comment back from the light department, has no concerns at this time. And we received comments back from the fire department. The fire department has no open issues at the time. And the tax assessor doesn't have any questions.
Something about the address or something with the fire department?
Right, right.
What is that?
What they received was under cover of East Main Street, and it was actually West Main Street, but they received a complete application.
Okay. Has there been any discussion about the benches and the place up front? And the width of the sidewalk and the travel lane for people?
There hasn't. There have been benches in the past. I guess, you know, we're putting them forth as, as an option. I think we have, you know, about a six-foot sidewalk out front, so the benches would, you know, cramp the style of the sidewalk a little bit. And there hasn't been a discussion, and I, I think that's an appropriate discussion for the planning board to have. We're certainly flexible in terms of going either way or adjusting the depth of the benches. We could, you know, go with a, we've used benches as shallow as fifteen inches deep in the past. So if you'd like to do that, if you'd like the other benches.
I, I think benches are a good idea, but I think the, the, the public going back and forth and to people is important, too. And I'd just throw out there the idea, perhaps the benches are built into the structure. As an architect, you could have a lot of fun with something like that. That's just a thought.
I think that that's a good caveat. There should be able to be people walking to a breast fast down.
If I can add to that conversation, Rob, the, the fact is that the applicants requesting waivers, and so the board could consider in, in some aspects that the benches are mitigation for those waiver requests because they're being installed in a public area of a right-of-way.
I see. Okay, yeah.
And there is a bench apparently.
The other is, you wanna take into account that tree that is there. So you combine the tree with the benches.
That might really squeeze it out, you know?
So take that, take that into account. This is just an FYI, but on the cover sheet on your, your Axon metric, it looks like you've got an alleyway to the left of the building, and I, I think you really only have like about a foot.
That's true, we only have a few inches, I think.
Yeah. I think Bob's question about the drainage, I just wanted, I think it was a great question, I just wanted to pick up on it. Is any of the roof pattern changing for the flow of the water?
No. The, the, the only thing that's changed, if we look at the picture, that picture of the existing roof, you'll see that there was an over, a, a, that mansard roof came up about a foot, a foot over the roof edge. So there was no water flowing out over onto the sidewalk. That actually, the top of that mansard roof came up higher than the flat roof, essentially. So the water had to flow back and to the sides, and that's, that's going to continue.
So the, the movement of, of water going back into the parking lot? The, none of that is changing.
None of that.
The amounts will stay the same, they'll be going to the same downspouts.
Exactly.
So none of that will be increased in anyone's.
That's correct, yeah.
I think the idea, I think the idea of, I think it'd be very helpful to, to put in writing the issue of parking and what you would do specifically to help if, if it all goes forward, what you would do to, to assist with the parking issues with the concerns of being raised by the abutters.
May I ask if you've been given a copy of that, that letter?
Yeah, I can forward the email to you.
So you can see the concerns?
What, what is your thinking about the lighting in the back? In that it's existing and so therefore it stays?
There is, there are, I gather, there's a freestanding light that lights down into the, into the parking and, and lights on the building.
What kind of lights are they?
I don't know much about them. I think they're just area lights, you know?
I think what, I, I think, and I'm just one board member, but I think what I'd like to understand is what, what those existing lights are. You know, are they floods, are they down, whatever? And, and because I think the lighting is a part of this and the waivers that are being talked about and whatnot. So that was a question I had.
To help clarify that, Rob, would you like to have?
I think a plan should.
A plan added to this plan set for the board to review and approve? Showing light trespass and isolated patterns?
I think.
Or just added to this?
Yeah, I, I think someone could go, and, and I'll get to that with the stamping issue. But I think someone could add to the plan that you have, where the lights are, their height, and what kind of lights they are. That would give the, that would give the board enough to see if that is enough information.
Should we be establishing a lookout for review? I'm not qualified to read those, that kind of lighting plan. I can't read photographs, but I'd need that reviewed by someone that knew how to do it.
That's me.
Well, a third-party independent.
Well, yeah, we can, you can, we can.
I don't know.
Let's, let's hold, we might, we might want that, we might want that. We might want, um, so, oh, typo in lighting notes. But maximum mounting height fifteen feet. So the ordinance talks about a maximum mounting height of fifteen feet. But I think the two goosenecks in the middle are higher than fifteen feet?
Let's see, let me tell you.
Are they eighteen feet? Bottom of shade is eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet on the bottom of the shade on this one.
And this has to be moved down three feet?
Yes, or, or, or it has to become part of what you're be looking for, for a waiver. But, yeah, right now, they're not, they're not at the fifteen-foot.
Yeah, bear in mind, that facade's been approved by special permit, right? So we're just adding a waiver, we really, ooh, that's a funny.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question.
That's kinda weird, yeah.
That's a good question. I, I, we still are responsible for the lighting. Let's put it on, I mean, this just needs to be a list of, we're not gonna decide anything tonight for sure, but. So that, so, okay, so that is the light question there. Where, so you have on your lighting notes, you say, for note number two, this is your drawing, D to G two, you say lamp output shall comply within the Georgetown limit of twenty-five lumens per square foot at sidewalk. Can you, can you show me in the ordinance where that is, where you're pulling that from?
I didn't find the ordinance with me, but I, I, it was in the, I got it from the zoning ordinance. I don't know if I cited the chapter, verse.
Are you?
Zoning section one sixty-five dash eight two, M dot seven, for fixture types and.
Dot seven, okay, se- yeah.
Lumen levels.
Okay, seven, so item seven is about pole-mounted fixtures, and item seven is about the types, the three types.
Right.
Shielded, not shielded, blah, blah, blah.
Right, and then there was a further note in that section about lumens.
Yes, if you go then past eight, past nine, past ten, you get to number ten on page eighty-two, and it says, "For lighting levels, horizontal foot candles, minimum, average, and maximums?"
Yes, right.
Okay. So this is saying, under building or under a canopy, you're allowed an average of twenty-five. Is that what you guys are referring to?
That's what we're referring to.
And you've, I think the type of light you want will, will be something, would wanna know what you, what type of fixture you're gonna be.
I was under the understanding that the existing conditions that were to remain unchanged were not part of the review somehow, that, that, you know, the back air, the, the back lot was essentially existing to remain. And since the use was continued from the previous restaurant use, the layout of lights and so forth was something that was acceptable or grandfathered in.
Well, this is, so this has never been before, the board before. And this is one of those, and I'm just speaking for myself, I find one of those del, those difficult balancing acts of, so the first time it's coming before the board and all these issues come before us. At the same time, it's, it's a business that people, you know, wanna see happen, and, and you try to balance a reasonable request with, so right now, it's just a question for me. But, but the lighting is important because lighting is something that really does affect the abutters. And so. I'm, this is our first meeting, and these are the, you know, sharing what we have. With, with regards to the architect's stamp, the existing stamped engineered plan certifies the footprint of the building, setbacks, and property lines. I have no reason to believe that any of that has changed. However, that plan is nineteen eighty-five. And due diligence for me would, would suggest that a surveyor, I don't know if James Barry is still available or not, but someone to simply verify, it would, it would be very short money to do in that regard, just to verify that nothing has changed. And then with regards to the second note, which is part of your note three, where you say, "The remaining items of information requested are within the qualifications of a licensed architect to provide a waiver of the engineered stamp is requested." I'm not, I, the other part of that, when, the intent behind that section of the ordinance is to say that there are many. um, is to say that there are many, is to say there are many, uh, professions that are capable of stamping, um, different, uh, different areas of scope. Some are appropriate, some are not appropriate, and so then that is where, why the planning board is inserted as if okay with the planning board. And I was thinking about this note and again trying to strike that balance and, um, this is just me, but one of the questions I have is would, but would putting a note on the drawing, I have two questions, one, you might be able to stamp it, but I don't know if legally that means anything. Two, would you be willing to put a note on the drawing that says, you know, you certify that, uh, that the, that these items, you know, layout of parking lot, da, 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 that they are true and accurate as shown on the plan, then test this, like test tour with my stamp kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
To give the board, um, a little bit more assurance.
Sure.
Some.
And comfort in granting a waiver.
Yes, yeah, eh, eh, necessary comfort in granting a waiver, um. I think Harry's parking question is, is a great question, um, and that's one of these balance things.
Can I just add to that a little bit?
Well, let me, I'd like to finish, um, and then I'd go to the public and then.
Absolutely.
Um. Ten, add note on plan inside of seating. I would wanna see somewhere in this plan that gets approved, um, a note that says, you know, the maximum number of seats is eighty-seven. It's eighty-seven now, it's gonna be eighty-seven, it'll stay eighty-seven, um, sorry, try to finish it. So on this.
Then I'll take a big mention of the decision to, if the board's requested it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's important.
Isn't, isn't that part of the special permit?
Hmm?
Isn't that part of the special permit?
What?
The seating.
The seating, yeah.
Yeah, to look into it.
Everything inside, I think is there.
It should be, it'll, it's, it's just as long as it's
Somewhere.
Somewhere, um.
I can look into it, probably as far as the special.
The existing, the, the existing right of way, that ten-foot right of way that is used for vehicular traffic, um. The issues that come up for me around there are, are, are the, is the safety issue of when vehicles are going out and a vehicle is trying to come in. Um, I've experienced times where one car, the two cars will meet and they don't, one doesn't wanna give up the right and so.
Sure.
Or then one backs out and that person will try to back out into the main road, um, and it's a dangerous little scenario, um. The other is that when you're leaving the site, you really can't see if somebody is walking around the building coming in front of you until the last minute. And it's a challenging area to improve, but I think you need, I, I'm going to look for that area to be improved as much as possible. And whether that's through really obvious signage, better signage, um, striping, um, uh, perhaps there are.
Door location? If, if there's a door that opens up into that access lane?
Um.
Which may not be shown on this plan, that might be there.
That, that, it, it, it's possible that maybe you have people that, um.
But a well-placed mirror.
I, 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 these are all the things that I think need to be looked at, so, so you have people coming around the building that you can't see. Um, you have cars coming in at the same direction and, you know, I just eyeballed it and it looks like there's about fourteen feet there, um, in width between building to building.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that's more than the width to the property line, but perhaps there's some sort of agreement that could be reached where you're able to use that full fourteen feet in some way. Where you put bollards to protect the buildings, um, but you give more room for an actual designated place for people to walk, or you almost could squeeze two cars by each other, I, I don't know, I don't know, I, you know, it's just a whole. So that, that area is an area I have a lot of concern about. Um. And then, uh.
Chris, did you guys, should we be addressing HP parking where it's a, an upgrade?
Uh, uh, yeah.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
I'm very glad to hear that.
Yeah. Yes, but part of the site plan, yeah, absolutely.
What, what I don't see in this special permit, I, oh, I'm sorry, you have to.
That's alright, um. So we've talked about the setback, has this thing explained, you already explained that, and that, okay, so those, that was my initial response and then what I'd like to do is I'd like to go to the public who's been very patiently waiting, um. So if you'd like to come on up and introduce yourself for the record and then
We are representing, um.
Could you come on right up and have a seat or you can stand at the table if you want, whatever makes you feel more comfortable?
Um, well, we are representing twenty-one and twenty-three, West Main Street, which was Pizza Factory. Oh, my name is Mortila Papa, I'm sorry, um, so we had a few issues, um, the first was with the visibility and, um, there are existing trees, as you said, that are really big in the summertime, so with the, um, next door property being significantly higher than our property, we had an issue with the visibility of our property. And with, especially in the summer, with the trees and the other property being higher, we have an issue with our property not being seen at all. So that is our first issue. Um, the second one is with the parking again, we're right next door and there is a fence separating the two lots, but in the past we've had many problems with, um, vandalism, again, from the other property next door as well as with parking, and our customers have not had any parking. And we have gone over to complain and we've had, um, cars being towed from our lot, but that is one of the issues.
Can I, ma- may I interrupt?
Yes.
Where, where is, I'm, I'm not familiar, where, where is your lot, I'm, I'm not, I'm just not good for it.
Pizza Factory is
They're right, they're right beside it.
There is literally like six inches.
Between the buildings?
Between the two buildings.
Right, so where is your lot?
Our lot is right next to, so the two lots are separated by a fence.
It's behind, okay.
It's just the left of it.
Behind the building, yeah, so the two.
So, that would be right there?
Right there, right.
Lot twenty-nine, yeah.
Ah, okay.
So the two lots are just, there's just one fence in the middle and we do have a big sign that says.
How do you, how do you get to your lot?
Well, let's, let's, let's not.
Uh, well, our lot is just on the other side, like there, it's on the opposite side to get around, it's the same kind of parking. But for us, and the other issue is with the parking, is that with us, um, we can fit about seven cars and their lot is about the same size as ours. And we have parking for like customers, just a few customers, and then the employees, which we have an issue with how many employees they're gonna have and their lot possibly all being taken and where are the customers gonna park? And we have an issue with them going around and then parking in our lot and then we not having any customer parking.
So, what do you want to say about the ventilation? Ventilation?
Oh, the ventilation, yes, I am, uh, another representative.
From the same.
So. Um, so another issue that we saw recently, my name is Enkiler Danakuchi and, um.
Could you, is it possible?
There's a sign.
I will sign, we'll sign now.
Oh, you're going down.
Yeah, we have, no, we, we have a sign, yeah, absolutely.
So I can read it? I don't want to. Thank you for doing that.
Uh, well, it was very interesting and thank you for hearing us, um, so now the issue the last couple of days, we noticed that, that extension, the corner of the, the new pub- property that you are talking about, the window was made and then tubes and ventilation and according to the people that were working there, we're seeing this at the bathroom ventilation, there were some work was done that nothing was there before. And that wall faces directly the property and where we actually go to get the food.
Yeah, we are talking about like the, there's ventilation that.
That portion there, the wall facing our property, actually, yes.
This wall?
And then they stopped and Mimosa, her mother, which is my sister, she actually saw and spoke with workers there and it was something that wasn't there and imagine now to come the smell of ventilation of the bathroom and everything and that's the door of the basement where we go get the food.
Right.
That shouldn't be allowed and it's facing our property, so, um.
We had a problem with the basement, the vent is facing towards our property, so where, where the customers walk outside, there's a loud vent right there and that wasn't there previously.
Right on that extension, it wasn't there before.
That is a new addition.
When, when, how, when did that extension happen?
Oh, we saw that, I think it was after the fourth of July.
This year.
Yeah, my mom saw it.
Mimosa, because she's there every day.
She did this before.
So, yes, and I think she, uh, stopped here, she was very concerned and I think they were doing something to the window, but the tubes opening, there were like, um, maybe twenty centimeter diameter, like openings, two of them, and I don't know what they will, what they will vent out.
Yeah, we just had an issue.
And it's not fair because customers are parking, they're gonna blow, be blown out with like maybe smoke, the kitchen smoke or whatever, it's coming out there and it's, that's the entry, the other entry of the building.
Right.
Don't they, okay, so, okay, so that's another whole.
I don't know if they have another.
Okay, yep.
She did complain about that, but I don't know exactly, she just wanted us to mention it.
Sure.
Because it was not there before, it, it was something new that has been put onto the building.
Yeah.
And the reason is that it does face our lot, so does it, it does impede on us and our customers.
Understand.
So other than that, the ventilation, do you want to talk about?
And, uh, another thing, like if you see the distance between the two, uh, buildings, it's like maybe
Six inches.
Six or seven inches, but now because of the new construction, I hope they take into consideration to clean it because all the
Debris and everything that is falling in there.
Inert, the debris is filled up.
In between the two buildings, I don't know if they're planning on cleaning it, but I just, there's like a lot of debris and it's just, it's been piling up in between there, I don't know if that's part of their cleaning process in the end.
And we usually clean it be- but because that's hazard, you never know what they put and teen jean, teenagers may go there at night or I don't know. It's, they, I, I, it's not my position to say, but in case of like you come out to work late hours because it's a food business and then at that corner, if that's open between two buildings, a man, a good sized man can stand there and just jump in front of you, I think that's a risk issue. I mean, I've always seen that as a risk because it's not very populated area after nine P M. and that's where businesses, you know, operate and then you can close the door and somebody can jump right in between those two buildings, somebody can hide pretty well and just wait for you.
I'm just saying rape or race.
I'm sorry?
Are you saying rape issue?
Oh, no, 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 just.
What kind of issue, I didn't get that word.
Well, we live in a strange world and people can find like hiding places and that's a perfect way for somebody that want to do bad.
You're talking about in this space here?
In between.
Yeah, just, it's a very small, small space where you might not even be able to see it, but it is enough to fit a person.
So it's probably best.
So just so, just so I'm, just so I'm clear, the two issues about this small space I've heard is, is trash and then potential risk issues.
Trash? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, especially with the fact that it might be, um, open later because it is a bar.
Yeah.
So there is that risk also, it will be open a later hours.
Things of some kind.
Yeah, maybe just like blocking it so people can't go in and out.
Yeah.
Is, is, can I ask, is the space on your property or?
It's in between, it's right between.
The space in between, it's our, in our property because you see the property line, I believe, yes.
Yeah.
It appears that way on this.
It's in between.
But we've established this plan is exact, may not be.
But I think it will be, yeah, maybe not.
This, this may not be, uh.
And I don't know.
But we just know, it, it is right between the two properties and it's just, there's just about six inches or so that is separating the two properties.
It may be beneficial for security of customers, I believe, and people that work around.
Did you bring these issues to the special permit?
God, we got that. I, I, I wanna let them, I wanna let them finish.
Idea about the special permit and what that is.
Yeah, we, we were.
You didn't go to the Z B A?
I don't think so.
No.
This is the first hearing we hear for and this is the first time that we are in a hearing, so we apologize.
You did get notified though, didn't you, for the zoning board's hearing?
I don't know if mom did. She might have, I'm not sure.
Not sure.
I'm, I'm not sure if she did, I can't.
She's a busy lady.
Yeah, she is, very busy.
She is, she is.
Um.
She put the list together though.
She, yeah, she wrote it out for us, but she's working, so. And the other thing that, um, I want to talk about is with our delivery drivers, um, they are constantly leaving the lot and they're parking in the back of the parking lot and they're leaving to go onto the main street and recently because of all the construction that's been happening there, there's been a lot of big trucks, um, pickup trucks and everything parking right in front of our business and that, um, kinda makes a blind spot for our delivery drivers and to seeing the oncoming traffic and there's been multiple risks of accidents with that. So just maybe like signage or something for them not to have, um, like, for them not to be able to park for long periods of time because they've been parking from like morning to night and so our delivery drivers always have to inch out and inch out and that's always also the sidewalk, so people like walking there, so they have to watch out and then the oncoming traffic, so that's just a big risk issue there, just 'cause our delivery drivers go out all the time.
Yep.
They're always coming in and out.
How do you handle your delivery, that would be nice.
I, I think, I, I think what I, I really wanna finish and let them get everything out first.
Yeah, so that was, that's, that's the issue with the parking that we've seen.
And maybe.
They did.
And I think in the front, uh, Mimosa actually I put that it's a two-hour parking, maybe if it's a last time, so people instead of two hour, two hour will park for six hours and nobody will pay attention to that, I mean Mimosa will and her customer because she's there, but who do you go to complain about that?
The police.
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 The police, yeah, just 'cause they're, it's there for so long and our customers are complaining, they can't even see when they come out. It's really hard for them to see the oncoming traffic, so a lot of them are, don't wanna park in there just 'cause it's really hard to get in and out.
That's definitely the police, let them know.
But before, with the issues of the parking with the previous owners, so, like the letter that you received and, um, we will do the same thing and call, so instead of taking care of customers and then you will be stressed about it and it shouldn't be like that. It should be notified, they should have probably fosters and you have, I mean, with seven parkings and on the article that was published in March, it was saying a hundred sitting, so if you have a hundred customer, four for each car, you will have, you need thirty parkings.
Yeah.
And if you have seven workers, you have zero parking and it means that you are occupied and we paying taxes for your customers, which is not fair. And some of them are our customers too and you cannot tow, a towing truck for somebody you know, but you can let it once, twice, but at the end the business goes down.
Right.
So.
Okay, so we have the, we have the parking issue.
The parking issue, yeah, that's just the, the issue.
It's very, it's very well understood.
Right, with a lot of businesses in the area, but with us especially just 'cause it's right on the other side and a lot of people when they go there and there's no parking, they'll just go right to Pizza Factory
Thank you.
Correct. Yeah.
'Cause there's another parking lot up there.
And we have the big sign that says do not park, but.
Well, this is where, in working with them, what they put down in writing versus verbal, you know, those kinds of
Thank you.
documents, we'll, we're gonna have to work out that everybody's happy with, hopefully.
Thank you.
I've got anything else?
If you can send that to me, I can make sure that the applicant gets it and at the next meeting he can have the issues addressed.
Okay, sure, okay.
Can we get your card so we can email to you or just hand it later on maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the address.
Okay, thank you.
Have you complained, are you finished?
Any, do, do you have anything else?
I think we covered, uh, and about, um, the big trees up front, I'm a biologist, but, uh.
How many trees are there, 'cause I think there's.
I think there are three.
Well, those, I think there's three big ones, I mean, in the winter time, it's really not an issue, but just when they bloom in the summer, they get really big and it does, yeah, like even our signage and our signs are a pretty good size, but they're blocked, but especially with the next door neighbor being even higher, like when you drive by, you will barely be able to see our store.
We will be invisible completely.
It'll basically be like it's an extension of the spot.
Like a tower.
And it's not, it's not a real rest, like no one's gonna be able to see it, so I don't know if that's gonna impede our customers and people being able to see our establishment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I think, I think it's.
Or maybe plant smaller plants and healthier, because they're getting not very healthy.
I think as, as part of site plan approval, knowing where those trees are on plan would be the first step in coming up with something.
And the photographs, I've only seen one tree. I don't, there's more than that.
Well, it is, it is what it is and we'll find out and they'll be on the plan.
I think it's one on the ar- that and two on the other ones.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah.
Maybe that's an old picture, how old is that picture?
We'll get them, we'll get them lo- we'll get them located.
Thank you.
Get them located.
Before everything's.
This is winter, it was taken.
This winter?
Yeah.
Is there?
Anything else?
Yes.
No.
I think this is all, thank you for listening.
Yeah. Okay, this is just the first hearing, so.
Okay.
And the other one will be on the twenty-third?
Well, I was just about to make a motion to continue this.
We don't know right now, but.
Okay.
To the, uh, twenty-third of July.
What, okay, um.
Second one.
I have a question.
Well, at fort, I, I don't, I wanted, the dis- the discussion I have is I wanted to hear if, for the architect to have an opportunity to respond, um, right now, just to
Oh, I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay.
So it's a withdraw the second.
Just, I just wanted to.
I, I do wanna say with the ventilation, we, we've been made aware of that and we're wanting to make remedial, you know, and put it on another wall, whatever it takes.
Thank you.
And, and all, it's not going to be as large a fan, evidently the H V A C people have put the wrong sized opening in there, so I can understand your concern.
So.
Can you put another wall, but that's on our property?
No, not, won't be on your pr- well, we'll, we'll.
Okay, we'll, we'll.
On another, a different wall.
Okay.
Um, but, I, we're, we're at that problem, um, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, my, my major concern is, um, I'm just wondering if, if we can get some sort of permission to proceed at our own peril with the. get some sort of permission to proceed at our own peril with the facade renovations, because we're held up on that. Um, we have um trusses arriving shortly, we've, we've continued deordering through. The uh business had wanted to open, we had a, 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 a building permit for the interior improvements. Um, the reason we're coming before the board is for the exterior improvements. Um, the fact that had we not put this facade up, none of the site plan review would have been required. Um, so uh the reason we're before the board today is because we decided to try to spruce, spruce up a facade, and I feel we're getting penalized for that effort. Um, and, 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 you know, I mean, I, but, but anyway, the gist of what I'm trying to say is that we'd love to get the permission to proceed with the exterior improvements at our own peril, if, if it gets overturned by a Butters or, or, you know, by the board, we'll have to take it down, but um we'd love, we'd like to, we'd like to open this summer um and uh do whatever it takes to be able to do that. Uh, we're glad to comply with, you know, putting what, whatever needs to be put on the plans, getting a survey done, but um we're really kind of in a bind uh construction schedule wise to keep everything on hold on the front of the building. And I guess that's, that's the only thing I'd ask for permission for tonight, is to keep going with the construction.
Howard, did you wanna say something? Did you wanna, you started to say something?
No, I, I, I just, um, the, the applicant made the statement about if they weren't doing any exterior alterations, that they wouldn't be here, and, and I disagree with that.
Okay, okay, and, and I, and I, I, I think um, I think that's a, that's a I understand what you just said, and I can understand how you guys would feel that way, um, and I also know what Howard's talking about, but that's another discussion. They're, they're, you know.
Uh, my understanding was it was due to the letter from the building inspector that said we had to go
That.
Site plant for, to the Z B A for the special permits, and because there was a clause about exterior renovations, that that was what caused the site plan review.
Yeah.
There's a requirement for it. My, I'm about that.
All special permits have to, have to come first.
But we wouldn't have had a special permit if we weren't doing an exterior renovation.
Well, according to what the zoning board did, I was thinking of a special permit for nonconforming.
Alright, I don't wanna, I. Okay, so, um.
Well, and anyway, the gist of what I'm asking for is to be able to proceed.
Be able to keep proceeding.
Construction at our own peril.
Okay, so, um, I'm just one of the board member, but I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm really uncomfortable with saying go ahead with construction.
I, I think it kinda, it, it flies in its own face, you're going at your own peril. Period, as anyone can.
I don't think we can give him permission to go at his own peril, if he wants to go at his own peril.
Yeah.
It's your decision.
Not our peril. Well, it's a building, the, the building inspector said that he will give permission if the planning board passes the site plan review uh to, to waive, to, to say that, you know, there'll be a twenty day waiting period evidently.
We don't have review, we have approval.
You have approval.
Yes.
But, once, once it's approved, there's a.
It can fail.
Yeah, there's a waiting period, and that's, that's the period that we will.
So, I, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we can, but um, uh, I, I guess uh with, with that being said, um, it's nine five, um, I wanna hear a motion to, I think everything's been put on the table for a first pass, it's pretty good.
I, I do have one question, and, and that's if we can get um either a photograph or a drawing to scale of the Butters buildings with this um, this new facade, so that we can see.
A rendering.
A rendering. A rendering of. What will it look like? The whole block, the whole corners of the, of the, the Butters. I think that's a great idea. Is that legit? I think that's a great, absolutely, we can ask for a cycle of approval.
Well, we definitely can ask for it, um, I, I think.
I'll second that, if it was a motion, this is, I'd like to see that.
Was that, was that a motion?
Sure.
Alright, so we had a motion and a second, um, any discussion, um, I think the only discussion I wanna suggest is, or put out there is that um, th- this is a tough, th- this is gonna be a tough, this is a tough um project, and I'm just speaking for myself, and, and why it's tough is that on the surface, it looks like they're not doing a lot, but um the, the intent of site plan review and what's going on with the town, this is, this is exactly what this board is about, and it really is so much more than just the uh elevation being changed and um uh, at the same time, at the same time balancing that with wanting to support a business and not um, you know, I'm not saying you, you shirk any of the ordinance, no, I'm not, I've never been saying anything like that for any project. Um, but at the same time, just being aware that um you, we don't wanna pile so much stuff on that um, that, you know, that an applicant would say, and I'm not saying this doesn't.
And, and, and no, I, I, I certainly agree, I mean, the fact is, there's been a restaurant there for over thirty years.
Yeah.
And, you know, for it to, for, for us to say, no, you can't have a restaurant there because they built a facade up, I don't know, uh, it sounds funny, but you're, I think you're absolutely right, that, that, that's why this board is here. To maintain the continuity of the town.
Yeah, so, w- w- it, it'll be, it'll, it'll be a balancing act for sure.
Well, he can't get an occupancy permit, it'll be approved.
They, they wouldn't have had to go for, come before us if they weren't changing the outside, would they? Because there, it was a restaurant, it is a restaurant, it had eighty seven seats, it has eighty seven seats.
Seven parking spots.
What is it? It had seven parking spots, it has seven parking spots.
I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think they're.
What is it, what is it that would trigger?
Fact of the, the, the parking, that's it.
Well, I don't.
That's the crux of this whole thing.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think anything, I don't think, Tim, to answer your question though, I don't, I don't think anything triggers it, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anything does trigger that review, other than the fact of what they are doing, proposing to do.
So, they could just drop the whole facade?
If they dropped all of the improvements, um, I don't think there's anything on the inside, Howard, correct me, that they can do that.
I, I'm, ju- to se- help settle the issue for now, I, I just, out of site plan approval, I mean, interpretation of, of this is per the zoning code enforcement officer, but projects requiring site plan approval except as otherwise exempted, uh, ex- exempted, no building permit for the construction, exterior alteration, relocation, occupancy, or change in use of any building shall be permitted, and no new or existing uses shall be established or expanded in off-street parking or floor area in conformity with a site plan approved by the planning board. Um, so, required approval includes, but is not limited to proposals for commercial, industrial, office, multi-use, uh residential developments, municipal, institution, utility, um recreational uses, so um, they are here, to me, that's the matter. Uh, I agree with the chairman, um, not to belabor too much of, of the, the site plan process, it is an exterior alteration. I think that the uh applicant has heard the concerns from Butters, concerns from the planning board, and really what comes down to is at the next meeting, which the board is extending, I think, uh, the, uh, a benefit to the applicant, considering their schedule of having them come in at the next meeting of the planning board in two weeks, and they just need to clarify handicap parking, in terms of the parking, um, just clarifications on the um, the lighting.
The, the site, the existing?
Site line, existing.
The existing and proposed lighting.
Existing.
And just to address the concerns of the Butters that were mentioned at the meeting.
As part, as part of the existing conditions with that site lighting back there, um, those trees should be located, um, for sure, uh, that are out front and sidewalk.
So, I, I think those are all reasonable and not excessive request of the board for additional information.
I, I, I.
And I believe at the next meeting of the board, with those issues addressed, that they can start, uh, the board could entertain the idea of voting on waivers and so forth.
And, and just picking up on that, so to your motion, Harry, that, so instead of us requiring them to prepare a document, leave it up to them to come back with how they want to communicate to us this issue that we have, which, which has been expressed.
I, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my second.
No, that's legit, yeah, you're sure.
And then, if they, if they don't, then we can say, well, that doesn't work for us, and you, you need to do it again, or whatever.
Just as an additional bullet point to, to complete on that, um, again, that, that access way to the parking, any doorways that may be opening outward into that.
Mm-hmm.
Proposal for ball, it's safety, uh, perhaps signage. And, and especially signage that might help to fray the um
I'd like to add.
The patrons there from using.
Alright.
I need to say.
Parking spaces that really aren't, they aren't supposed to be used.
Um.
Your Butters.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
I wanted to add, I wanted to specify the delivery of the trucks and where they are delivered, and what times, you know, how many trips do they make to this?
Well, I don't, I, I, I think the issue of coordinating with their delivery trucks that come in and out every day with their construction trucks, um, let them address that, let, let them come up with a plan for how they're gonna address that to, 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 to meet their concern.
Are we talking about food deliveries, or are we talking about construction?
Everything, any, any kind of delivery.
It'd be a conflict between the two.
The, the, the only, the, the traffic issue that, that I heard from the app from the Butter, from the Pizza Factory, was with regards to construction vehicles parking out front and staying there for a long time, and right up at the intersection where your guys come in and out, and that, that's what I heard about that.
It's this off-street parking right in front of the two, two properties, both ours and their property.
Yeah.
And there's um pickup trucks and construction vehicles parked there all day.
Right.
And it's just, it impedes um our delivery drivers from moving in and out, and also, I mean, this happens, it's not just them, it's also other patrons later on that could be parking there for a long period of time, because it does say two hours, but I don't think anyone really looks at, you know, times two hours for the interest of you parking there, and I just believe it makes it very dangerous, not only for our delivery drivers, but for the customers that are parking in our lot and moving in and out.
A lot, a lot of this uh is an enforcement issue, which um we'll, we'll, we'll certainly wanna bring up, um, but uh, okay, what?
Can, may I ask, with, with, this parking behind the building, why the construction workers out there?
What I'd, what I'd like to, what I'd, what I'd like to, what I'd like to do is um move this along to the, to the next hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue this to the, what is the?
Twenty third.
Twenty third?
Does that give you enough time?
I think so.
That gives you a week to get stuff into us a week before.
Um, uh, I think uh, a surveyor to verify the points, I could probably get that done, um, that's that surveying the existing conditions, doing a rendering of the front, all of that's very doable. I think we could put together some conditions for parking, um, you know, and uh, and lighting and tree identification doesn't seem like a problem to me. Um, uh, I think, I think I can all do that.
The Board of Health inspect, where your older problem is, do they get involved with this?
Board of Health?
Yeah.
They get involved certainly with the kitchen issues and uh, not all of that.
Right.
Uh, we expect the interior work to be fit, completed in the next week, thankfully, and so I think the large, you know, the construction truck back and forth thing will be pretty much taken care of, um, there's just the exterior that will need to be done, and so.
Would, would you be so kind as to immediately communicate with your group, the challenge with the construction vehicles, staying out front past the two hours and the conflict?
Mm-hmm.
And then we need to notify, uh, I think, uh, police department.
Yeah.
About enforcement of this issue sooner rather than later, not.
Stop parking back.
So, okay, so there was a motion, um.
Was it something? Motion to continue.
Continue second.
And it was seconded, uh, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous.
Great.
Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, meeting minutes, so we wanted, we, okay, now here's the deal, it's nine fifteen, and we are gonna be done at nine thirty, we're not going past nine thirty.
I like, I like this, alright, I like.
I like that.
I got one question.
Looks good.
It's four o'clock and the alarm goes off.
I'm.
You can do that, Harry, you can do that.
I think the minutes are perfect.
Alright, alright. So, Tilly, you wanted to?
Yeah, I, I um had several uh corrections on the minutes. Uh, previously, I always just addressed my own, you know, whatever comment I had on there. But since these minutes for this particular uh meeting time, I thought was very critical, because a lot of, for instance, what we give to an engineer is going to be like a punch list of things that we talked about, and Larry talked about, and the, and the attorney who talked about, that was going to assist him, and, and this person's engineer wrote the letter asking for a list from us, and uh, I understand that the planner compiled that from minutes. So, I thought this was really important that we get all the minutes. So, I, I turned it on the T V, and I really looked through all of the, the details with that in mind. So, I got a note after I sent it to Wendy that said that the planner was only gonna accept my corrections when I spoke, and nobody else's, so I wanted to know what the process is.
Okay, um, I'll, 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 I'll jump in on that and share with you what my understanding is, is that um, for meeting minutes, uh, if there are typos and there are um grammatical whatevers, those can be done by simply sending your email in directly to Howard and Wendy for those corrections, and those uh will, will be done, and no one has a problem with it. Um, when we get into, this is just my understanding, when we get into um changing anything that someone else said, or adding information, changing the substance of it, the way that has to happen is we have to bring it, there's two ways that can happen. One is, it has to come back before the board and put in front, and the board has to be in agreement that that in fact was what was said. The other is to simply say, this is um what, what was said and should be included, and I don't know how their workload is and whatnot, but you could then let it be verified by Wendy that in fact, based on the tape, what was said was said, and then they can come to the meeting and report that, yes, we verified these changes that were correct. But, we can't just be changing them with our own email going into, that we think this should be added, and that should be added beyond. Howard, what do you wanna share about that?
If, if I had known, Tilly, that you wanted to compile lists, then I would have taken just a bullet point list, as opposed to creating the minutes as the list. If you misunderstood, I apologize, in the past, when I'm compiling a decision, I will review the minutes, but I review my own notes and uh correspondence that goes back and forth between engineers and, and so forth, so.
What is your process doing the minutes though, in general? Wendy, I know.
W- Wendy reviews the meeting, uh, and types them out, so if there's any disagreement about a statement that was made in terms of um just the overall conversation, especially in terms of a vote or a motion, she'll revisit the D V D.
So, she's the only one that does them?
Yes.
And you don't do any of them?
Oh, I review them.
And you, you don't?
But I'm not gonna, I'm, that's, I don't care.
You don't change anything?
No, I'll change some things, we'll go over the meeting minutes together.
See the, is that agreeable?
Well, I think.
Well, well, it's, the, the meeting minutes are, are, are minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So, the, the full transcription's through the audio and the video recording, so.
So, if there's confusion in your mind, you're not gonna make it up, you're gonna go back to the.
I'll, I'll go to the D V D, and if there's for, further clarification that needs to be done, obviously, I wanna bring it back to the board.
And it happens first with, it happens first by coming out of that office between Wendy and Howard, the meeting minutes, that's why then they're submitted to us, and we all review them, and if we are in disagreement with something that's being said, or we think something has been omitted, um, we, we can bring that up, but it happens first in there, and then, then comes to us. We can just directly deal with them on typos and that sort of thing, but if there's subs- substantive changes to the minutes, that needs to be something where the whole board is in agreement, or it's verified by you guys by going back to the minutes again.
Yeah.
And then saying, yep, this is true, this has been.
Right.
Right.
But we can't just be changing the minutes without going through one of those two processes. I'd like, I'd like to back up in the bigger picture and just leave with all of you guys to think about. I, these minutes are transcripts and they're unbelievable. And, um, I don't know how Wendy does it, but, uh, I think her time is, it could be better spent um, helping Howard do some other things than transcribing these meetings. I think the meeting should be used, the, the, the recording should be the transcription. If there's any questions or whatever, it's there. And the meeting minutes, if you talk to a lot of people about how meeting minutes are to go, it's, it's not about everything that's been said verbatim. It's just about, um, you know, these, the gen- the general headings of what was covered.
And decisions.
And decisions.
If you look in any other planning board meeting minutes that I've looked through for other properties, they're all one page.
Correct.
And it's short and sweetened to the point.
Correct.
It's not who said this and who said that and who argued with that and it's just short and sweetened to the point.
Correct.
And the, the problem with some of those in the past was that there wasn't a legal backup to the minutes. There wasn't a re- audio recording or a video, now there is.
Right, but even then, I mean, they, they still, they've been doing them that way for fifty years.
Well, you, you look at, I mean, you look at.
Now you have, now you have, yeah.
They, they are gonna be shorter and we're, we're working on making them shorter because they don't need to be.
The boat takes a while to turn.
Right, but the thing, the thing is, is that particularly recently, let's, I, uh, that's fresh in my mind. Um, a decision that was made on a subdivision concerning the affordable housing way back when. When you look at their minutes in the file, you're gonna guess what transpired. And that would be a big help right now for us in a new subdivision for affordable housing. To realize that we can't pick and choose what we wanna do with this bylaw, we have to be pretty consistent. You know, and that's my thought. You can't, if you don't, if you change your mind on deciding on how to go about it, to my mind, that's appealable. That could be called capricious. You gave it to this guy and you didn't give it to me, you know, that kinda thing.
Well, and wouldn't, wouldn't that be covered in the voting? Where, where for project X, it was about approving something and everybody voted affirmative. Then another project comes up and it's about approving the same thing.
Yeah.
And now everybody voted affirmative, if one person voted no. Um, and then you have that piece of information that someone is changing their vote and it's on the same subject and now if someone wants to look into, you know, filing a suit about it, they have to go to the, the, uh, the, the recording to review.
Right.
O- otherwise.
I mean, even more dramatically, if the, the board votes to approve, uh, a waiver in one instance and votes to not approve essentially the same waiver in another.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, um, you know, it, it does bring up the question. However, I don't think that's solved by minutes. I mean, I, that's, that's solved unfortunately by lawyers and they would then have to go back to the original source material.
But if they don't have anything other than decisions in the past, minutes, I've been on, on a witness for, and when I was on the zoning board and they questioned minutes, uh, quite a lot.
But with the point is now.
Yeah, but I mean, that's why I'm, I'm a stickler on it. Yeah, you don't have to do, um, you know, uh, phrases or philosophical phrases or, or, uh, or instances, you know, you have to really pick and choose which ones are, are, uh, important enough to, to put in. But you are questioned if you're ever in a witness stand for a court case.
Could we do this, Howard? Could we, could we ask you to, um, I, I know, you know, so there's Robert's Rules, how you run a meeting and then there's, then there's, you know, the bylaws that you have to be consistent with. Other than that, I'm not aware of an agreed upon format for minute writing, but.
Uh, mi- minutes need to, uh, basically, uh, whose attendance, what time you opened, uh, the actions in, in, of the board, um, in terms of votes and motions taken, policies that were established and when you adjourn.
Yeah.
But, but not necessarily the logical path that was followed to reach a decision.
You, you wanna have some context, obviously, to, to the minutes.
Well, that's really what, I, I think that.
I mean, that's me on the bones.
Coz the core of what Tilly's asking about.
Is.
That's what I'm saying.
What supports, is, to what depth?
Yeah.
Does it have to support?
Less than what the board's doing now.
I think it's, I think it's something less than what we're doing now, but maybe more than, you know, just a vote.
Well, my, my, my desire for the minutes is, is these are, these are twenty-one, these can be ten. And the board can take up revisions to the minutes at the meeting and have it done in ten minutes. Did you say this? Yes, I did. No, I didn't.
Well, how, how do you handle when, like Larry Graham in there, how do you, if, if you think there's something different than it was said based on your watching the, the show, how do you adjust his comments?
I ask you.
Do you call him up and ask him?
I, I would, yeah.
But you don't call us up. I mean, I was told, don't do it.
But you, I would say.
No, no, wait a second, Tilly, I, it's, wait a second.
That's different.
I told you not to change other people's statements.
Yeah.
That's what I told you.
That's what you told me.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, that's different than what you just said I did to you.
So, how, was I supposed to call up Larry?
No, you can turn, you can say, Howard, I have questions on what Larry Graham said at the meeting. Please have him verify these items and I would send it off to Larry Graham.
And if, and if then the meetings again come back from these folks to us and you were to look at it and say, that's not what Larry said, or I don't believe that's what Larry said, then at that point, Howard and Wendy go back and verify it based on the DVD and that would be the process.
Right. Well, what is?
Which I would say would be the, the preferable approach even to talking about it in the board because we're gonna burn a lot of cycles saying, well, I don't remember, did he say that?
That's right.
What did you, well, I didn't really mean that. And there's the rattle.
Yeah. We've been getting our minutes really fast, so.
I would agree a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay, it's nine thirty.
Ding.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Good job.
Howard, you're.